Okay, I'd like to get started here. Thank you for all showing up. The Eastundy Board of Trustees regular meeting dated Monday, August 19th, 2024. I've got 6:02. Franco, you take the roll.
Trustee Sauter?
Here.
Trustee Saviano?
Here.
Trustee Tribber?
Here.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Britzen?
Here.
And if you'll rise with me for the clip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, thank you. That'll bring us to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item?
Franco.
I didn't receive any, but it appears we won't.
I'm here with a public comment session. If I did not get a chance to say it before I was able to, I will go away with it. If I may do see.
Where's your assistant? If you could give us your name and address, please.
I'm Dave David from 146 Crestwood Drive.
Crestwood.
Yeah, I'm here from Eastundy. Good evening. More than a month ago, you were sent letters addressing a broader issue. The responses I received indicated that those of you who did read the emails did not read the attached letters in part or in whole. Yet another response deflected the issue to the police, an institution that is to be blamed with the present situation that we find ourselves in. And if you'd read the emails, you would know what I mean exactly. Today, I've come to address several deficits in the local ordinance. First of all, regarding the fence permits. They require that adjacent fences be built no less than three feet away from existing fences. This protects existing fence structures and their bases from getting damaged by new holes as they're drilled into the ground for the construction of the new fence. They also allow enough space between the fences for maintenance. However, no protection is offered against deliberate forms of vandalism through terrain modifications, examples of which include digging a trench next to a fence, removing the soil around the basis of the fence post to the point where they're exposed, or rarifying the soil by replacing it with mulch or other inserts that may decrease its density and therefore destabilize it. Inserting plastic wraps that prevent water from draining can also further destabilize the soil and allow for enough moisture to build up to allow picket fences with wooden posts to rot quicker than the normal wood. The local ordinance also does not protect residents from other residents who invite lots of people into their homes on a regular basis and turn the entire street and neighboring properties into a playground instead of utilizing actual playgrounds that are meant for those purposes. I asked the board to prohibit excessive sport activities, large gatherings and other activities that disturb the peace, rob others of their rest, and result in trespass of land on a regular basis. The ordinance also does not protect residents from brightly visually irritating lights that are within line of sight or reflect brightly off of shiny surfaces in a way that the light is also essentially pointed towards a neighboring property. Examples may include bright LED halogens, or they are not really halogens, just bright LED spotlights, other visually, other lights that cause visual discomfort, UV lights or lights that appear like UV lights would be an example of that, or lights that have a strobe to them or create a visual discomfort by flickering or any other visual effects. The ordinance is, of course, meaningless if there is nobody to enforce it. The police has refused to enforce the dog ordinance even when a neighbor's pit bull has been let loose repeatedly onto our driveway. And even as it attacked a passerby and his dog, the police have brushed it off and thrown accusations back at us for reporting the incident and showing them proof of it. They refuse to enforce the no trespassing of land ordinance and disorderly conduct ordinances every time certain neighbors trespass onto our front yard and shower us with curses and threats, even in the presence of the police officers. Through a series of events that were described in detail in the letter you sent to you, it became apparent that the police, as an institution, chooses to punish the innocent and pardon the guilty, spread slander, and sow discord within the neighborhood. To elaborate on this point, in the course of performing some of their so-called investigations, as they spoke to other neighbors who were entirely disassociated with the issues that we encountered, the police essentially began to involve others and effectively brainwashed them into believing things that were false, even when no previous issues existed with them, between us and said neighbors. I encourage the board to take the blatant negligence of duty shown by the police seriously and take appropriate measures. The village administration has similarly refused to enforce the ordinance related to trees and shrubs on village property that prohibits the attachment of objects to them. When confronted with concerns regarding a fake letter sent to my household as if it were sent from the village, we were told, "Don't push back. Let the bully get tired and bored until it stops." I am asking the board to step in by making appropriate revisions to the ordinances that will not only serve to alleviate the present situation, but prevent others from arising in the future. I am asking the board to exercise its authority over the police and ensure that ordinances are being enforced and not their private opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll speak with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hello, I'm Blair Moll. I've got a property that you guys might know of as 315 Fourth Street, the Spartan Axe Building. And I've been getting a lot of calls from, Chris and Eri be going back and forth on that one. Evidently, the Spartan Axe, people have listed the business for sale on Biz Buy Sell, and that's true. They're trying to sell out of that or get out of that one. But in the meantime, the businesses or the building is not for sale. So that's been brought up a couple times. So if anybody's getting questions on this, they seem to be coming like they're working through a broker and they're at a certain stage where it's relevant, whereas I'm not hearing anything about this, so they're just coming straight to you guys on that one. So just so everybody knows that. And then I do have another question. I don't know who to reach out to on the transferability of that gaming license. It seems to have some value to people, and I just don't know how those work. So I don't know who the proper person would be to follow up on that one.
Okay, well, when a new proprietor were to move in, they would have to come to us, and we put that process in motion. So it would essentially be, you know, just a continuation of it, but all the information that would normally be needed is going to certainly be needed with a new proprietor.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but if there's gaming in there now, we haven't had any problems or issues with that, I wouldn't anticipate any problem with it continuing.
Okay.
So I don't know if this is something or information that you would need in order to find a new tenant.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out if the new tenant needs to buy the business from the old person to acquire the gaming license?
Oh, no, no, no.
Or if they just come in here fresh to you? And if they come in fresh, they still could go to the...
Gaming license don't transfer. They don't transfer.
They would have to apply for a new license.
Yeah.
And then does that take the typical six-month process with the state of Illinois to make that all happen?
Whatever the process is for the state of Illinois.
All right. Regardless of how it goes, they're going to go through you, you guys go through the state, and it's normal timeline.
Same would hold for the liquor license because they currently have one, but it doesn't follow the establishment, it follows the proprietor.
Okay.
So when they, in other words, and when the Duroz family were to sell the business, the license becomes an all void, and whoever is now the new tenant would have to come and start that process.
Okay. So I was looking forward.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to adjust the board? Huh? Seeing none. Oh. Good job.
This is August 14th.
It's on any agenda or non-agenda item, so whatever you'd like to adjust the board on is, the floor is yours. If you'd just give us your name and address.
My name is Julie Fleischer. I'm at 25 One Holes Avenue. I've been having some significant issues with getting a lot of violation. And I've been dealing with a lot of harassment with my neighbors, and I've come to the village for three years now regarding a lot of these issues that I'm now getting violations over. And I don't know what to do about this. I've asked you guys repeatedly for assistance. I am on disability. I've had repeated surgeries, and I've gotten nowhere with you guys. Now I'm getting violations, I'm getting harassment from my neighbors, and they're leaving notes on vehicles. The police are very aware of what is going on, and I have dealt with the Forest Reserve as well. I've lost my homeowner's insurance because of the issues that I've been dealing with with the Forest Reserve. And I've gotten nowhere with any of this. So now it's come to that I have been extremely polite with you guys, and you guys are now fining me, and I don't know what to do.
Well, I'll certainly help if you would like to take it offline, because it sounds like it's a little more information than we'd be able to discuss here now.
Absolutely.
So if, after the meeting, you're still available, I'll sit with you and we'll discuss what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Seeing none. Okay, that'll take us to our consent agenda if I could have a motion. It's a big one, so.
Can I ask to pull, sorry, items D and E into the other agenda items? I just want to discuss a couple of things publicly.
As well as C for me.
Pull C as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'll move to approve a regular village board meeting minutes dated July 15th, 2024. I'll move to accept warrants list in the amount of $1,000,031,822.48 and $339,884.13. I will move to approve a resolution adopting the 2024 Kane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And finally, I'll move to approve an ordinance terminating the designation of the Prairie Lakes Tax Increment Financing District Development Project area and dissolving the Prairie Lakes Tax Increment Financing District Fund.
I'll second.
Any questions on those items? Comments? No? Franco.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britzen?
Yes.
Okay, well, then let's discuss item C. If we could have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into an engineering services agreement with Gerald L. Heinz and Associates for the Barrington Avenue Resurfacing Project. Second.
Hey. Andy, you had questions on this?
Yeah, more of a comment on something to look into as we're looking into the engineering for this, since this is connecting Water Street where we're doing the development and Barrington going up to, out towards 68. That's kind of a, where we're talking about doing a protected bike lane possibly, so if we could look at that when we look at the engineering cost to see, would that be feasible to put a protected bike lane? Because it does connect the downtown to the terrace, and there is a lot of bike traffic already going up and down that hill. Now that there's e-bikes and e-scooters, that hill is totally doable, and people are going up and down it all the time. So just wanted to see if that could be included in this engineering study.
Okay. Joe isn't here, is he?
No.
Yeah, I would, I would want to talk to him too about the funding for it. It was probably 30, 35 years ago, perhaps, when we redid that initially, and we received a fair, fairly amount, a fairly good amount, I should say, of funding for, considering it was a main artery going through the town. We, I want to say at the time, it was $600,000, and it was nearly half the cost to resurface it. So, but the other thing I'd like to talk about too is if we are going to continue to allow or continue to need to allow truck traffic to go through there, and if that's the main artery, which it should be, we need to make sure that the resurfacing is done to accommodate that weight, because currently it's not. And it's getting chewed up, obviously.
Are we planning on during this resurfacing, doing any lead pipe changing outs on this, on Barrington? Are we aiming for that at least, or no?
So it's my understanding in the late...
Phil. Thank you.
It's my understanding in the late 90s, when the road was last resurfaced, lead services were replaced between the main and each B box. So we're going to be conducting a survey to determine how many, if any, lead services still exist between the main and the B boxes. Now, nothing was replaced, at least not through the villages project, from the B boxes to each home.
All right.
So we don't believe we have many lead service issues along the project. Just a quick note, the limits of this particular project, this STP project, are from 68 down to Van Buren. So these types of STP projects have to terminate at other, other routes that are part of the federal aid urban system, and 68 is, as is Van Buren. So beyond that, anything west of Van Buren would have to be a separate study. Other inclusion.
Yeah, it seems like it's going to be several efforts, but working towards getting a stretch eventually that goes all the way out to, because the Palumbo property that is being developed is going to have bike lanes from 68 out. So from 68, like where the library is, to Barrington would be a different project, but this would fill in some of the gaps between getting all the way down to the river.
To the river.
And the downtown mostly. And are you saying for the water, that since we're not disturbing from the main to the B box, that we aren't required to do, to check the homes? Or are you saying that you don't think any of those homes on our inventory do have lead? Because if it, if we do need to dig it up eventually, when we're tearing up the road would probably be better before we tear it up, if we do have to eventually?
Our inventory, if any of those lead services between the B box and each home were not replaced, then those homes are still on the lead service line inventory, even though it's a partial lead service line, not a full. And if, if they're copper or another non-lead product material type between the main and the B box, then we would not have to dig up the street at any point. So our objective is to determine, we're looking to call it potholing or excavate down to each B box to determine what material type we have on either side of the Buffalo Box.
So the resurfacing of Barrington Avenue is not going to affect anything as far as a lead service line replacement from the box to the home?
Correct.
There's no rework, in other words?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So we have some things to do to identify which, if there are any existing lead services at the main, we have some work to do to identify those.
Yeah, makes sense.
But the cost savings on the, the federal fund, it's worth expediting this project to next year.
Well, and funding for this, I mean, would this be something that Joe would take on for us? Or would that be something we would have to do from either state or federal money?
You mean in terms of the engineering?
No, in terms of the actual work, well, in the reengineering too. I mean, it all goes into it. It's probably going to be a million and a half to redo it, maybe more. I'm just wondering if, would Joe be maybe submitting for a grant money on our behalf, or would we need to do that?
For this project?
Yeah.
So this project is, there are federal Surface Transportation Program funds available for this project. It's a 75-25 split, 75 federal funds, and it's, the funds are allocated through KKCom and CMAP, so it's, but, so the project, construction-wise, we're projecting about just under $500,000.
Oh.
And it's a 75-25 split for...
Okay.
It's all right in your packet on page 29, Jeff.
Okay.
All broken out beautifully.
Are there possible incentives if we were to make a protected bike lane, that there might be some grant funding towards converting a street that didn't have a bike lane to one that did?
We'd have to see if, through this program, those types of additional aspects of the project could be included. There may be some paperwork that would be necessary. So that's something we'd have to look into, and I could certainly do that here in the coming days, weeks.
So when you're talking about a protected bike lane, are you thinking a curb separating the bike lane from this roadway, or a painted bike lane, or bollards?
There are a lot of different ways that I've seen, but maybe kind of like parking blocks that can be set on the road. I've seen that sometimes to make it so that cars can't just drift into it, so that it's not a shared lane where it's really no different than what we have, where there, if there isn't enough room and you're just having paint. But yeah, if possible, protected is, I think, the standard of what is the safest for the biker and the most comfortable for the motorist, but depends on how much width we have available and street parking. So I know there's logistic issues that engineering will have to look into.
And we have a number of residents along Barrington that do like to park the existing parking lane, so logistically, can we accommodate two ways, two-way, two-directional, two-way directional flow of traffic, plus a parking lane, plus a bike lane? It would make it kind of tight, but certainly.
Is there parking allowed on each side?
No.
Uh, no, just the south side.
So is there enough time without jeopardizing this grant money to have Joe evaluate if we can do an on-street bike lane as part of the project?
Yes.
Okay, great. And also, you're going to make sure that all of the lead service lines that are under the street will be replaced before we actually construct?
Currently, we're soliciting proposals to conduct that analysis, survey for us.
Cool.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Were there any other questions, comments on C? No? Franco.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
And Trustee Britzen?
Yes.
That'll take us to item D on the consent agenda, if we could have a motion.
I'll move to approve an ordinance amending sections 9401 and 151002 and repealing sections 94.4.02, 94.03, 9.04, 151.014, and 151.021 of the Village Code requiring fire prevention and safety regulations in the village.
Second.
Okay. Sarah, did you call this one?
Yeah, I just had a, there were a couple of things about this that I just want to clarify for everybody. So this is, and it's kind of grouped with E, so forgive me if I'm asking about something that actually belongs in E. But this is about the way that we work with our fire department. This is how the inspections and enforcement and all that kind of stuff works. So could we have just a quick overview of what changes, how this will change businesses who apply for permits or residents who have to apply for permits or anything like that?
Paul, do you want to take that? Would you like to share fire permits here?
Yes, so several of the sections that were repealed in their entirety are strictly to streamlining and reduce any redundancy that was in the code. There was a few versions of the fire prevention, international fire prevention code that were adopted. So we repealed those pieces, and then practically speaking, it will direct applicants directly to the fire district instead of filtering them through the village hall and through the permit approvals process here with the village. It'll send them directly to the fire district, who, to best of my knowledge, already does their...
Handle those.
Those penalties, yeah. And so it'll just...
Removing the redundancy?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, you guys already do your own permits? Okay, so it's not like this is an extra step that people are going to have to go through. It's a step they've already had to go through in the past. It's just streamlining the village connect, the telephone game?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
It allows the village to also condition their approvals on fire districts.
Okay.
And approvals as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yep.
So is it fair to say that anytime we have a change in the codes for fire prevention that we're going to see this, so it's yes and no, kind of a housekeeping kind of thing? You still have control over this? And I don't mean to denigrate anybody, but it gives me a little pause when whatever a village, or us especially, is going to just relinquish control to anybody outside the control of the staff, because we don't have a say in it. I don't want to suggest that this is just going to become a revenue generator for you, but what keeps somebody, and I mean, I know this is a way out in the sticks, but we have some old buildings in our downtown.
Absolutely.
What would keep a future fire board or department from coming in and saying, "Everybody's got to get fire suppression," at a cost of $250,000 per, it would end up closing half our town.
So there's a section in the fire code that directly addresses existing buildings and structures, which is, actually doesn't fall under your written building code that you guys have signed in? So when an existing building gets a new occupancy, then it is part of building code and fire code, those need to be upgraded, correct? However, those only need to be upgraded per what that existing chapter in the fire code recommends it to be. Now, there is a term grandfather, but we're not, we don't make existing buildings install sprinklers unless they're going to do something completely hazardous, not a line. There isn't leniency there. What makes this easier and streamlines it? Nothing's changing currently what is already being done. If a new business comes into the village, as of right now, they go to the village, they get their occupancy inspection, and they get all their permits from the village, and then they have to come cross the line, come to us, and get ours as well. All this is doing is streamlining this together, which is something we're already doing, me and Mr. Rannieri over phone, and it's making it more of a legal aspect at this time. This ties into other operational permits as well. As an example, we'll use the food truck for an example. You can solely rely on us now legally instead of saying, "Oh, yeah, it's okay. We did it on our own," as far as inspections and safety is concerned on that aspect. This will 100% not change anything that's already been in process at this time. No cost differences to the businesses. Everything's already been, and the only thing we charge is impact fees and then permit fees. Nothing's changed. The impact fees are already written ordinance, and you're, and that's not changing, so...
No, which can be considerable, depending on the type and size of the development.
Absolutely.
Can I ask where those impact fees go?
Where they go?
On the reserve account?
I'm sorry?
Do they go to a reserve account?
No, they go in the operational budget of the fire district. The fire district relies solely on tax income and those impact fees. That's all we operate on. So, and our district is split between two counties, so those counties' funds go to that county.
Yeah. Well, impact fees for water and so forth are something that we rely on as well, because everything below grade is on us. So what's the likelihood that the fire department would be willing to share in that generation of revenue?
So our impact fees are solely on buildings built, nothing else. No utilities, no water mains, no electrical, strictly structures built, and that impact fee is applied for the projected cost of what it's going to take to protect that building on the fireside. So if someone comes in and builds a 10-acre commercial warehouse, that's going to re-project 911 calls for EMS calls to that, gas cost to that, manpower to that building. That's where those impact fees came from. Unfortunately, those were written in ordinance way before my arrival in this area, so I can't tell you how it was exactly broken down, but as far as those going up, they're not going up anytime soon.
Okay. So if in the event somebody in the downtown had a store down below, wanted to renovate the upstairs for a B&B, which has been done in this town and others, would, would that new code require a suppression system for up above and therefore down below?
It depends on you. So with that, did you say Airbnb? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
So if it was an Airbnb, that would fall under the residential code, and that's whatever Chris Rannieri requires them to get installed. The fire district's fire code does not imply anything towards residential, unless it's an apartment or condo and it's common, common ways and common areas, that's it. As far as living units, the fire code does not address those. It's 100% on the building code. That's kind of why it makes this operation a little bit better too, because if you lay the building and fire code directly next to each other, chapters three and eight through both, mirror. But the building code may say, reference chapter 12 of the fire code, but Mr. Rannieri can't enforce chapter 12 of the fire code, but I can. And my code may say, reference chapter 11 in a building code. I can't enforce chapter 11 in a building code, but... chapter 11 of the building code, but Mr. Rannieri can. And that's where we had to make this verbal agreement in the past to make it work for the better of the businesses so there wasn't any how to moving forward.
Okay. Then the only other question I have is with regard to an intergovernmental agreement. Did Alrod weigh in on this or can you? I mean, have you reviewed it?
That's E.
Wait.
That's the name of the.
Sorry.
But isn't that E?
That is, yeah, that's E.
Well, okay.
Can I ask you a question that's slightly, related, slightly unrelated? We had a accident at the Santa's Village. Somebody fell off of a ride. And, you know, we generally want to believe that Santa's Village is doing a great job with their rides and safety and everything like that. But do you guys oversight that at all for their rides?
So Santa's Village rides are oversided by the Office of State Fire and Marshal. I have requested them to advise me when they go out every year, but I do get proof that they do go out every year and inspect those rides.
Okay.
There are other aspects of the park that do need a little bit better oversight, but with the village's help, that will be, that will, that's, hopefully this will help that out as well because there is a lot of development within the park that doesn't really fall under code, but still needs oversight and they kind of just, yeah. So we're working on that, me and Mr. Rannieri together.
Okay.
So fireworks show that was an example. He wanted to host a fireworks show. And then we went in there, Chris called me and I went in, did an inspection of the land and said, this is what you're going to need to do to provide the show before you go to the board to ask permission. And it ended there. So, no, but the state fire marshal office does inspect every single ride.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's a state law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Franco?
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Mark? You might want to stay.
Trustee Treiber?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that will take us then to item E.
I'll move to approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of East Dundee and the East Dundee and Countryside Fire Protection District.
Second.
Okay, questions?
Another unrelated question.
Absolutely. No, you're fine. Go ahead.
We are interested in, you know, you guys giving us the Firegains Park across the street here. And I've talked to, you know, your chief about that and he said, you know, that you guys might be willing to help us out with that. And I haven't talked to him since, but I was wondering if you could maybe, and put in a word for us.
Respectfully, sir, that is above my rank.
Okay.
To my knowledge, that land was owned by a resident of the Village of East Dundee who was an avid supporter to fire district back in the day, prior to my arrival. Upon his passing, donated the park, and it's not even donated to the fire department. It's actually donated to the fire association, which is the charitable organization within the fire district. So that association raises funds and donates to charity every ounce of income that comes in on those rental, park rentals and everything else. That would be something that has to go to the association board. That is out of my control. I cannot give you an answer on that. I apologize.
Do you know anything about where this association board meets or?
I can provide you with that information, absolutely.
So with this governmental, intergovernmental agreement rather, does the fire department have similar IGAs with every community within the district?
Believe it or not, you guys will be our first. Everything has been a handshake up until this point. And our other home rule agency or government within our district, which would be the Village of South Barrington, is looking at this and will be utilizing this as a backbone for them as well. Because their town is split between two districts, not just one. So, yeah, this is a good push forward for everything. As far as code, life safety is concerned, especially nowadays, we need to have these in order. They can't be handshake deals anymore with these day and ages, unfortunately.
Okay, so.
You know, without the IGA, as stated before, the village has their rules and ordinances which must be followed, and so do we. Ours are signed into law as well. It makes it easier on the business owners and the developers within this area to get things done quicker, more efficiently when it's, when it's combined together. So.
Is Huffman Estates part of the district or part of Huffman Estates?
They're, they're themselves, Huffman Estates Village.
Off of Beverly Hills, okay. And just like any other intergovernmental agreement, it can be rescinded for a 30-day written notice?
Yes, we have in this agreement 90 days to terminate for no reason or any reason at all, and then 30 days written notice for a violation of the terms.
Okay. All right, just let that out to the public. So anybody else have any questions, concerns, comments? No? Okay. Thank you, Park. Appreciate it. Franco?
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Treiber?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to our regular agenda items here. If we could have a motion for A.
I'll make a motion to accept the May 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023 stub year annual comprehensive financial report for the village and police pension fund and place it on file. One second.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments?
Do we have the auditors here?
We have our auditor from Lauterbach and Amen here to discuss any changes or details within the audit. Justin?
Hello, I was like here, what, two months ago? Again, I'll keep it short and sweet. If you have any questions, please let me know. My name is Justine Corr. I'm one of the audit managers at Lauterbach and Amen. I'm here to present the audit for stub year ending 12/31/23. I'll start off by saying thank you to the board for having me here tonight. It's now storming for a change. I would also like to give a special thank you to the staff for having us on site and bearing with us on, like every audit. It's been a pleasure working with them again. I know having, like, they have their own jobs and having auditors on site is, oh my God, the auditors are here. So, again, it was a smooth process and no issues were encountered, which is what can be found in the SAS 114 letter. The next is the annual comprehensive financial report. We were able to achieve the COA award again with the GFOA and we'll work with Brandis again next year to apply. Independent Auditor's Report, it basically talks about what their responsibility is, which is the fair presentation and preparation of the financial statements. Our responsibility is to generate an opinion on those financial statements and I'm happy to report that we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion we can issue and the highest level of assurance that we can issue. The MDNA or the Management's Discussion Analysis talks about basically the rest of the report and like forms of charts, words and graphs. So it's like basically a summary. If you have any questions in particular, even after tonight, as you have, please feel to reach out to them or us directly and we'll be happy to answer those. Again, any particular questions pertaining to the numbers, please let me know. Otherwise, I don't want to bore you with. There's a lot of numbers in the report. So everything was fine overall. Again, it was a short audit, so now switching gears was all, like, just the eight-month audit was all tricky, but again, we got through it. Management letter comments, nothing for the current stub year, but there were some prior, which you will see the GASB pronouncements coming out. And as applicable, we'll work with the staff to implement those. Any questions? Again, I want to keep it brief and short, but.
Were there any glaring problems in that, those new opinions that are coming out?
Just on our side to implement them, that's all. But again.
I mean, this is kind of a one-off type of process that we did here. So.
Yes.
To ask, you know, well, we got an unqualified opinion, that's great, or unmodified. I'm on the public side, sorry. But we, you know, I mean, if there wasn't anything that we need to look out for next time, it's not really an issue.
Again, it's just a process. Again, nothing, that's why we issued an unmodified opinion. If there are any material, like you will probably see the journal entries that we also posted to get the books to what they need to be. So again, it's just a normal process, nothing out of the ordinary. Again, she's amazing to work with. I wasn't on this audit, but I didn't hear any bad things about the audit. So again.
Of course.
Yeah. So again, no issues at all.
Okay, great. Good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Great. Thank you. Okay. Franco?
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Treiber?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item B. Yeah, this one is a discussion of village board direction regarding Kane County's Fab Fox Water Trail Access Project. It's the creation of the water access site and proposed improvements along Bartles Park and Water Street. I believe we have people from Hay and Associates.
We do.
And if you guys, if you'd like to.
Offer a couple of opening comments here. I'd like to start out by reiterating that we are pleased to have been selected by King County for their Fab Fox Water Trails Access Project. As I briefly summarized in my memo, Administrator Storley and I have met with King County and their consultant, Hay and Associates, to discuss opportunities to engage with the Fab Fox Water Trail Access Project. This opportunity would primarily involve creating an access site to the Fox River, which would be incorporated into the Fabulous Fox Water Trail System. And access would be mainly for paddlecrafts or kayaks, canoes, et cetera. We also discussed project ideas for improvements to Water Street and Bartles Park, some of which would be necessary with creating the river access site. As you may have noticed, what is proposed in the concept plan in front of you is a little different from what was included in the riverfront master plan. But importantly, it provides parking for those visiting the riverfront and park and a pedestrian crossing between the park and the access site. Joining us this evening are Karen Miller. She's the executive planner with the Kane County Development Department. Also with Hay and Associates are Tim Polowee and Ryan Alexander are their landscape architects with Hay and Associates. Karen will talk a little bit more about the trail system and the trail access project. And Ryan will walk us through the concept plan that you have in front of you. Also with us this evening is Dave Peterson, the executive director with the Dundee Township Park District. As the, the village owns the park district property, but we have an intergovernmental agreement with the park district and they essentially maintain it, maintain the park. So Karen, Karen Miller.
Good evening. I'm Karen Miller with the Kane County Development Department, and I am also the Illinois co-chair of the Fabulous Fox National Water Trail. And I just wanted to give you a brief background information about the, so it's second from the top and then it's inside that one. It's East Dundee, second from the top. So, good evening. As I said, I'm Karen Miller. I'm executive planner with the Kane County Development Department and also the Illinois co-chair of the Fabulous Fox National Water Trail. I wanted to give you some background information about the Fabulous Fox Water Trail since we are looking at providing an access site to East Dundee. So on June 2nd of last year, Secretary Deborah Holland, the interior secretary, designated the Fabulous Fox Water Trail as part of the National Water Trail System. There's only about 35 water trails that are part of this system. And I worked with a group of stakeholders along the Fox River in both Wisconsin and Illinois for about five years to create the water trail and to meet the criteria that is required by the National Park Service. And our application ended up being about 100 pages long. So the Fabulous Fox National Water Trail is 158 fabulous miles across two states and seven counties with over 70 public access sites. Our vision was to provide a water trail that has suitable access to the public to enjoy the quiet and active recreation, the scenic beauty, the abundant wildlife and historic and cultural features, and also to increase tourism and economic development, which has been found in other nationally designated water trails around the country. Communities along the Fox River embrace stewardship and public engagement to provide a sense of place. So you can plan your trip at www.fabulousfoxwatertrail.org where we have included detailed information about the access sites. We have dozens of itineraries. Also within those itineraries are links to local businesses and activities to help support economic development. And we also have downloadable maps. We've divided the river into 14 segments, so you can take those maps with you on the river when you paddle. So moving forward, the Kane County Board a couple of years ago took $1.2 million of our American Rescue Plan funding and allotted it for planning, marketing, infrastructure for new and improved access and signage along the water trail in Kane County. We also applied for and received a $270,000 grant for improvement to construction of new access sites from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and also another $100,000 as part of another grant for marketing, which we are in the process of doing. So as part of this, we're calling this the Kane County Access Infrastructure Project. As I mentioned, it's funded by the Kane County American Rescue Plan and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. We have contracted with Hay and Associates to go through these five phases that you see here. And we have completed the first two phases of outreach and data gathering and also feasibility and prioritization. And we were excited to list East Dundee as being one of the top projects in our feasibility and prioritization phase. So now we are working with Hay on engineering, design and permitting. And Hay can, can provide further information. Or Phil, would you?
Yeah, no, I'll turn it over. Ryan, if you want to take us through the concept.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Alexander with Hay and Associates. I'm a landscape architect. We've, as Karen mentioned, we've been working with them on the Kane County Fabulous Fox Access Water Trail Project. And village staff approached us seeing an opportunity to sort of piggyback on, on that Kane County project to revisit the master plan for Bartles Park. As Phil mentioned, the previous master plan done a few years ago had the complete closure of Water Street, but given the inclusion of the kayak launch, we, they saw an opportunity to provide parking for kayak users, watercraft users, giving them a place to park to utilize that, that launch location. So with that, we redeveloped that master plan to partially close, well, we're fully closing Water Street and turning it into a one-way-in, one-way-out parking lot going northbound upstream on the river with angled parking. And through the center of the parking lot is a raised crosswalk platform area to kind of slow down people driving through the parking lot and provide that access from parking spaces over to the launch location. In redeveloping the master plan, we wanted to incorporate as many of those previous elements as possible. So we've kind of redone the layout of the overall park, including adding in the, the new play area, adding in a half-court basketball where currently you have a full-court basketball. The half-court lends itself more towards families versus teenagers and young adult pickup games. And then also including a pickleball court, which has been kind of gaining steam in the Parks and Recreation community. We've kind of flip-flopped the location of the basketball and pickleball with the play area. So here on the plan, the existing playground is where the basketball and pickleball are. And we've moved that north so that the noisier activities of the basketball and pickleball are further away from the residents. We've moved that north so that the noisier activities of the basketball and pickleball are further away from the residents. We've incorporated a couple of pedestrian entrance plazas that will have some monument walls and opportunities for public sculpture to serve as a welcoming feature for pedestrians walking through the park. Along the river, there's going to be more naturalized improvements. So we've got, kind of pulling off of the kayak launch access path, a swing pirtle, and this is not a playground swing, these are bench swings. So instead of having fixed in-ground benches, they're swing benches, so similar to like an A-frame bench swing in the backyard. And then adding in more ornamental plantings along the pirtle access path and a tertiary level, less improved access path of the flagstone steppers. That'll be more of a get out into nature, get out into the gardens element. So the difference between like the ornamental plantings and naturalized plantings that would be done along the rest of the river is that the ornamental plantings are going to be more intentional, more ornamental and structured. Also included along the riverbank are several outcropping areas, and these would be large stone blocks that would provide people with stairs down to the water where people could engage with the water, fish from a couple of the outcropping locations. And then also there's a fishing pier downstream of the launch, which is a preferred location to reduce the conflict between fishing lines and watercraft. We've also included the multi-use trail, which I've gathered there's been some interest with having the bike lanes, protected bike lanes along Water Street. And there's opportunity to incorporate our multi-use trail with whatever happens in the future with the bike lanes along Water Street, whatever form those take in the future. Also included are some bio-swell and pollinator gardens. Again, just trying to create more natural and green spaces within the park for users, you know, versus, rather than being a more structured and hard-lined, set in stone park space, these would be more, more naturalized and allow people to kind of walk through gardens. There is a shelter located centrally between the basketball and pickleball and the play area. This will be a green roof shelter, could be a green roof shelter, which just essentially just means having small plants on top of the roof. This whole plan, I kind of all kind of came about in these past couple of weeks as we are considering applying for Illinois Department of Natural Resources Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Grant, OSLAD, which will be submitted in the middle of next month. And given the Kane County project, the village staff saw this as an opportunity to, you know, go for that OSLAD grant because OSLAD looks favorably along, towards intergovernmental projects. So having the funding coming from the Kane County is kind of a point in the, point in your all's favor for developing this park and receiving that grant. So with that, that's kind of some broad strokes, if there are any questions.
Just for clarity, can you share, if you have clarity, which aspects of the riverfront portion of this would be funded by the Kane County?
Absolutely. The Kane County Access Trail Project would include the access, the paved access path down towards the river, the launch itself and the ramp down to the launch, and a stone debris barrier that would protect the launch. So that kind of reverse S-shaped white sidewalk going down towards the river, the brown launch, and the stone projecting out into the river just upstream of that launch. And then along with that would be any restoration that would be necessary as the, for, to restore from the development of that, those elements.
And we talked about the fishing pier being an optional add-on if there was funding available, is that still a possibility?
We still need to kind of further develop some of the cost opinions with the other four projects and trying to equitably distribute the funds for that Kane County project.
Gotcha. So I was going to get just a little bit more context to how we got to where we are today. Being that this will be an ADA accessible launch, there was really no nearby ADA accessible parking. So putting the parking here makes a lot of sense. Because if you want to use the ADA launch, you probably need to have easily accessible ADA parking. And there's also, in addition to the regular angled parking spaces, there is a trailer parking space if you're pulling some kind of trailer. You can have a longer space, which I think is a great amenity. I look at this project in three phases. The priority phase, phase one, would be the part where Kane County's providing the funding, which is the launch. Obviously, the parking associated with that access launch is a priority as well. So that would be like priority two. Priority three would be the park amenities themselves. You know, Phil's been working with Dave to collaborate on sort of reimagining that park. And there's a lot of interesting elements on that. But we haven't had yet a lot of public discussion or community feedback about what those park amenities could, would, or should be. So as we sort of discuss this tonight, I think we should look at it with the lens of it's great that we're getting the funding for the launch and that's something that this board has said for years, has been something we've wanted to add. So if there's agreement tonight to move forward on that, then, you know, that's full steam ahead. We will try to submit for a grant to get funding for building out the parking and then the additional amenities along the river. And then the park itself, sort of reimagining that, you know, may take some more time to coalesce on a vision. But for today, if we can get consensus on sort of phase one and phase two, that would be ideal.
So can I just clarify, you're okay with us sort of just not like dealing with the park itself right now? Like tonight? Okay, so it's just for phase one and phase two that we should be discussing? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I'd like to also add a quick comment on the flow of traffic around the park, if I can. So this idea, obviously one-way flow, northbound through the parking area, the idea is to prevent this from becoming a through street. It's for parking for the park and the river almost exclusively. So motorists on Water Street coming from the south, northbound, we would configure the intersection at Water and Second so that the natural flow of traffic would make a right onto Second Street, up to Barrington, turn left. And as you can see on the map here, we're proposing closing First Street at Barrington. And the idea there is kind of multipurpose. Obviously, it's for pedestrian safety is one aspect. It's also to discourage anyone traveling through the, we'll call it the parking area, from continuing straight northbound. We want to really discourage anyone in the parking area from traveling north on Water Street and/or on First Street. The idea is to really emphasize this is a parking area and pedestrian safety. So Water Street to Barrington and Barrington to Water on the north side of the park would essentially become, for the most part, a two-way street. So there would be stop, stop signs, they're just not shown here. That would have to be engineered at some point, but...
What happens to First Street if it's closed?
So First Street between North and Barrington would... There are, I believe, three driveways that are on First Street, just north of Barrington Avenue.
So it would stay there and would just stop?
It would remain, yes, so it would be closed at Barrington, yes.
Can the streets around there actually support the amount of traffic that would have to reflow?
Something we could certainly look at to see what kind of traffic currently is on First Street.
I mean, this is an area where we have a lot of the really narrow roads that we're already talking about not allowing parking certain times and things like that. And so I'm concerned about closing First, which is one of the larger roads in that neighborhood for traffic, especially filtering out of the park. I completely understand the pedestrian safety issue. It's just, North is narrow, Second is narrow, these other streets are more narrow than First. And I'd want to, before we decide on that closure, I'd want to be sure that it makes sense to close it. I totally get not wanting people to go north on Water, but maybe allowing them to either get out to First or go... Because at least letting them get out to First only makes them go one more block before they can get onto Water. You know, as opposed to just having to like drive around the neighborhood for a little while to get back out there. So, that's, First is a little... Closing that's a little, like, I have questions.
A little concerning.
Sure, sure. So it's something we can look further into and provide some additional information.
Because there will be people who want to go north on Water. You know, who want to go around the park, like who want to do that even from the park. And so if we kind of angle it so that, I don't know. I mean, that intersection is a mess, it's a K right now. So I completely understand wanting to do something with it. I just don't know if closing First is the... And on a completely different note than closing streets and traffic, can we talk about the plantings and ornamental plantings along the river?
You know, one quick thought on this, I mean, because this is just concept, one option is to keep First Street open, one-way southbound perhaps. So that maintains the flow of traffic, but you can't continue northbound. Something all these different ideas can discuss and contemplate.
Tons of different ideas, I'm just not sure about closing it. I definitely want to talk to more people and really explore that. Because again, once, if you're leaving the park or if you're going... Well, if you're going down Barrington, it's fine. But if you're leaving the park, literally your only option is to take a right onto Barrington, to go back to Second, to then take a left onto North. You like have to do practically an entire rectangle to get north on Water. So that's just, I mean, it's not like it's miles and miles of extra driving, but I picture people getting lost on North Street.
Why can't you turn right out to North?
Because it's a right.
On Water?
No, but it's a right turn only out of the park. It's a right, yeah, that's what's...
So leaving, leaving the park...
So you're closing First and it's a right turn only onto Barrington. So go to get back to Water.
I guess, you know, that is, you know, a good point though, but if people aren't using that parking lot as a through street, then they're taking, you know, going around the park. They can turn left on Barrington from there and then go to Water Street North.
Right, I'm just saying, leaving the park. Like leaving the park, you can't, you can't go north.
Is there a problem with making it both left and right turn?
The intent of making it a right turn only was to further discourage cut-through traffic.
But if we, I see.
I think we can continue to evaluate whether or not it makes sense to close that. I think there's a good point to be made that you could still make it a right only or a straight only and not make it, and just make it no left turn. So, because, you know, we can have the engineer evaluate the amount of traffic that's currently on there and see what it would look like. So that's not a decision we need to make today, if we have that conversation.
So you were saying something about the one plant... Oh, sorry, trees. When I see ornamental, I assume non-native plants.
The intent would be to use native and native cultivars, but in an ornamental structured way.
Thank you. That's very important on a riverfront.
Being more selective in their, with their height and width and size versus naturalized planting where it's seeding and letting it do its thing.
Makes perfect sense, I appreciate the clarification.
So, these would be perennials, there's not maintenance to have to replant them every year and sell seeding, re-seeding, and all that kind of good stuff.
Two notes from a river aspect of this one. After living on the river twenty years now, is the ice, in the winter time can be really damaging to those piers. So it's just going to be something to take into consideration. And then directly out from where you're talking about, the basketball court, there's two rock piles in the river. And I don't know if it's an old train-trussing bridge or something, but depending on how high the river is, they can be completely, you know, you can't see them. River is low right now, it's out here, you can see them out there, so.
Yeah, we've seen those out there and we've got room to get around those. Obviously, when there's, you know, varying water depths, it's going to be up to the user to determine their level of competency and comfort.
Another way to do this is put a booby out there.
That's, I mean, something that could be discussed with...
My name is Tim Polowee, I'm the project manager working with Karen on the Fab Fox project. So kind of aware of the stuff Ryan's doing, work together, but managing separate projects. So yeah, we are fully aware of the rock piles out there. The floating pier is proposed would be inside of that rock pile. We did talk to Erica and Phil. Floating dock, it's not required, but preferred that the floating part is pulled out over the winter to protect it from those ice dams Ryan mentioned. Large stone structure, sometimes called stream barbs that are intended to deflect flow away from the bank and protect the bank. So it should help protect the dock and that infrastructure that's installed. Also should help make that area maybe a little bit more tranquil for people getting in and out of their boats as it directs flow away from that bank. So a couple of different aspects there. But definitely, we've looked at, I think, well, the river floods, it also gets real low, it gets real high. So we're taking that into consideration for the design of the dock. Although there is, let's say, ten-foot fluctuation on the Fox from like low-low to, it's flooding everywhere. It's really sort of where, the way the dock will be designed, it's five foot down or five foot up. So it's not really, although it's ten feet, it's not like the dock, or the very tip of the dock is moving five feet, but from where it's anchored is only moving five foot up or down. So all very good points and all things. We are working with different vendors that manufacture the different dock products and our engineers. And we've had a survey crew out there that not only surveyed the land, but went out into the river. Working with a geotechnical engineer, he's going to provide, actually this side we didn't need to do borings because you had borings from when the water mains replaced. So all those different factors are being considered in the view of this design. Very aware of some of the challenges of the Fox River.
Including the dam removal?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the reasons this site was selected is that its water level does not, will not be affected by the dam.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. We received, or we talked to, had, say, received over two dozen different proposals. We ended up with five priority projects and about half of those proposals were eliminated because if, when, and a whole other discussion, but if, when the dams are removed, we can't spend federal funds to put in docks that are going to be left high and dry. Not a good use of federal funds. So this site was, you know, safe from, I think the term we used, it was resilient to dam removal.
So can I ask, since this is going to be an investment on the county's part, does maintenance fall to us?
The maintenance would fall to the individual villages or municipalities who own the location.
Hand ownership.
Hand ownership.
Erica, what did you need from us again today?
Just consensus on phase one.
Do you have what you need to move forward for the Kane County portion?
Yes, as long as there's consensus on moving forward with.
I guess if I may clarify, there will be an IGA coming from the county since their funding improvements. And that would also specify that somebody other than the county is responsible for long-term maintenance. I guess it's the state's attorney.
The state's attorney.
Is preparing and sending it over. But for the Fab Fox project, there would be no financial requirement from the village. No match, nothing like that. Just agree to let somebody else build it. And all five projects, we'll be going out to bid under a county contract. Of course, we'll have Phil and other staff coordinate here locally. But again, no burden for you to hire an engineer to oversee it or inspect it. You may, taking care of all that, working with among the local partners to see it done. That ideally, we also will be going out to bid about a month from now. The funds have to be encumbered, not spent, but encumbered by the end of the year. It's part of the federal grant, so construction won't start until next year. I can imagine the contract will start in February, but you never know.
Strange. So, yeah, I think the kayak launch itself, phase one.
Yeah, it's all the way up to what is currently the sidewalk, I guess, right there along the edge of the road rather.
From the sidewalk down to the river.
If we build this, we could close down the shady boat ramp that's right by the bridge? Or, that's not great at all.
And I think the multi-leafed trail would be ideal to go all the way along the whole length of the trail.
For the secondary, for phase two.
Of the river.
Yeah. The park is my biggest concern, and if we don't have to deal with that tonight, then that's great.
Well, I guess I do, I do question this eight-foot multi-leafed trail. Because, I mean, what is it gonna be? Is it gonna be paved? Is it gonna be?
Uh, we haven't gone into materials yet.
I mean, this is only a long, long segment. What happens for the rest of?
There's further discussion and additional project work that needs to be done outside. I know Phil has mentioned that there's, you know, additional work to be done for the bike lanes along Water Street. So incorporating it into that project when that gets assessed and the engineering gets done for that.
There's an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant that provides funding for bike lanes and sidewalk, basically pedestrian and bike infrastructure. So that is also open right now. There's a lot of grants out there right now, and I need to have six more fills in order to do all of the stuff that we wanna do. But I would like to tie in some of these bicycle infrastructure projects into sort of a larger conversation about which are the priority areas. So that this ITF grant is, I think, every two years, so that we can decide which ones are the priority projects when those funding cycles come along. But I think incorporating this section now to then be incorporated into the larger scope is a good plan.
And that way you're not causing additional disturbance like in the future. Disturb it now, disturb it one time and then connect to it later.
Hitchcock, you know, would they be able to help us with that grant area on that since it's somewhat connected to the riverfront project? Because they, you know, one of their selling points was that they have a ninety-seven some percent success rate with their grants. So I would like to have them write in some of that.
For this walkway, I would encourage, if you could, to avoid paper bricks.
Oh.
That's a high maintenance issue.
Absolutely.
Stamped concrete would be far preferable. Maybe pigmented, you know, that kind of thing, but.
Yeah, and materials will be discussed later on during the engineering and design development.
Okay, so.
I'm a thumbs up.
Consensus is just along the river then, up to where that walk is, so. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Is, um, when we also have our representative from the Park District, do you see any issues with this plan or any concerns? I know part of this is probably more, a little bit more down the road on your end of things, but.
This is the first I've heard of this. Thank you. Staff and I met with Erica and Phil last year and they introduced this. We wanna, I know my board will fully support expanding the park and for us to maintain it. So we're excited as well. And some of the ideas in the park, I like, the pickleball has grown tremendously. And within the two rec centers, we have seven courts total, not enough. And outdoor courts, we have none. But we are looking to build some here this year and it's in our budget. So the idea of one pickleball court's probably good because with houses around, if you have six, eight of them, it gets really loud. I don't see that being a problem in the way they station or the way they located it. So yes, we're very supportive. I talked with my board president about this last week after Phil and I talked. And I'm sure our board will fully support any expansion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Erica, I'm just really sorry. Phase, does the second phase of this that we're doing, does it include the parking lot? Or is it just to the eight-foot path?
I mean, for today, we just need to make sure everybody is fully supporting the access, the idiot here and the access to it. But if you have any other comments on the parking area?
I don't. I mean, actually, my comment would be, I like it, so. I'm just curious if that's what we're starting on.
I still need to work on identifying funding for that portion. But I've got some good ideas. Great. I hope so.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Your questions, comments?
Love it.
Thank you.
No. Okay, thank you. All right, that's gonna take us to item C then. We could have a motion for that.
I'll move to approve a resolution waiving bidding and authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement with Testing Services Corporation. Three sixty South Main Place, Carroll Street, Illinois, six zero one eight eight. In the amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand dollars for soil, steel, and concrete testing services at the Parking Garage Project site.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments?
Um, I have a question.
I do too.
Why do we call this, uh, you know, why do we say that this is, you know, waiving the bidding when we got three bids? How does that?
Village attorney, would you like to weigh in or shall I answer?
Well, you didn't put it out for official.
We need to do a RFP?
It's a pause, so.
Okay.
Should we put it out?
Gotcha.
So I'm struggling with the idea of the misstep here. McQ, this is not new to them. I already discussed this with Erica. This is something that I would have liked to have seen be presented to us upfront. Simply because it's not an add-on, it's not a change order, but now it's an eighty-thousand dollar hit. It, of course, begs the question of how many more down the line we're gonna see. We're not gonna eighty-six this project because of an eighty-thousand dollar unforeseen expense. But how many will we see? That's my, my point. And the idea that, well, we had a phase one or phase two soil test, so I don't really see that soil as a big issue of this. But steel and concrete, certainly McQ is a big enough company to know whether or not the vendors that they use for materials are providing materials that are sound, that are meant to do what they're supposed to do. The strength, the tensile strength of concrete is supposed to be whatever it should be to accommodate the weight of a parking deck. The steel needs to be as strong as it needs to be. These are things they ought to know already. And I don't know how it is that they're gonna test this and not delay the project. And what happens if it does? And my thought isn't so much today, tomorrow, but it's ten or fifteen years down the road. If all of a sudden a big chunk of concrete falls from the roof of this thing and lands on a car, McQ is gonna be pointing to, um, you know, the testing services company here. And testing service is gonna be pointing to McQ, you know. In the meantime, we're gonna end up with a parking facility that can't be used. I would like to know that we have some sort of protection down the line that for this, we're guaranteed of a certain quality. And is there a bond that needs to be taken out to protect the Village Beast Dundee in the meantime? I don't know, but I think there should be.
Is there a representative from TSC here to make?
There is. If you don't mind me introducing yourself, podium.
Hello.
I cannot answer McQ's behalf. I have no idea what happened there. But what's your question?
Well, my question is that how long is it gonna take to test steel and concrete? How's it gonna be done? And, I mean, does the concrete that you're gonna be testing need to be cured over a year period, a five-year period? Does the structural integrity of these materials decline over time, which likely it would? But what is, basically, what do we get for our eighty thousand dollars?
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna follow, you guys have a specification book on testing. It's kinda like the rulebook we have to follow. And it requires us to follow the ASTMs and the American Concrete Institute for testing for concrete and steel. We're gonna be on-site pretty much full-time, sampling the concrete that day. You only wait twenty-eight days and then you test the cylinders for strength. After twenty-eight days, concrete producers say at twenty-eight days, it should be five thousand. And then we're gonna test it in our lab. Our lab is federally and state-approved. And we give the results, say, hey, you got your concrete. It's well over five thousand or it's not at five thousand. Which then the engineers will then take steps to further either test or redesign the building. So that's how. It doesn't take five years, no. I don't know, anything more than that?
Well, I mean, is concrete gonna be poured prior to it being tested?
During.
During. And what if any event happens that you find a flaw or a problem with the mix? The, like I say, the structural integrity of that concrete after it's been poured? Who takes on the cost of removing that faulty concrete and redoing it?
Your concrete producer, probably.
They, the concrete pour is making promises about the quality of their product. And what he's saying is if he's gonna check against what they promised, and if it doesn't meet that, then they have to replace it.
As it's coming out of the truck, we're testing it. If there's a problem right there, because there are specs for that mix. Air content, slump, temperature. If there's problems right there, we notify them right away. That truck is either rejected or sent back to the plant or whatever they wanna do with it.
So is this common practice that it's tested during the pouring? So this is, is this a common?
It's a common practice, what?
That it's tested during the pouring? So this isn't anything out of the ordinary?
Every job.
Or anything like that? Okay.
Every job, every private job, yeah.
So I can, I can see this, my brother does this for a living too, so I'm, I'm a little bit more familiar. It is, it's standard practice. It's like an insurance agency. It's like an insurance policy.
I kinda say we're the UL on your toaster. That's what we are for.
And that the, the materials that are coming into the project are what they have promised to say they are. There are problems. There aren't any, any kind of inconsistencies. And honestly, if we're spending six million dollars on this and we are testing the primary materials that need to go into it, I don't want McQ to do it. I want an independent testing service to be doing that. And so, as, as much as I had your same initial, you know, like why wasn't this, you know, part of the bigger budget or, or whatever, it, it, it totally makes sense and I'm glad that we're going down this path.
Yeah, I, I agree that to a degree, that it's better to have more information than, than less. However, what I'm concerned about is down the line, you know. You can tell me that it's okay today, what if it isn't okay tomorrow? Where does that put the Village Beast Dundee? You know, I mean, where does that put, I mean, from a liability standpoint, if I have a chunk of concrete falling down on somebody, we got problems. And so even though you could tell me today that, you take your slump test, you time it, and it spreads at a uniform rate, I don't know.
We, we know what our liability is. Our lawyer can tell us.
So you, your contractor's protection says that they have to provide on to the village.
Who does?
Okay. And I don't know who it is that you want to do this, that will be able to guarantee for all of eternity that this building will never fall down.
I mean, you're not gonna like say, I can't eat an apple because eventually it's gonna be a core. Like we just, you, you know, I mean.
I'm not saying that either. All I'm doing is, is proposing the what ifs, the questions.
It's like zero to sixty though.
You know, so, I mean, these are important things to consider. That's all I'm asking the board to do is to consider them.
Well, I think testing is the board considering it because it's giving us, we're, we're doing more. We're doing our due diligence. We're, this is more checks. I completely agree. I'm not a fan of another ninety grand for the parking garage that is already very expensive. But doing the testing is vital as a step in this process to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
I agree. Absolutely. I agree that the testing and making sure that the material is to the standards of what is being asked to accomplish is, is, is done. However, I just wanna make sure that we have assurances that.
I think anyone in the project has a liability stake, from your structural engineer, your civil engineers. I mean, we all have our own stakes in what is done. My main concern is what's coming out of that truck and going in the forms. And if I see an issue, right away we notify.
And soil.
Because you're my client.
And the soil and the steel.
And the soils, yes, the oil. There's no asshole, right, man? And we notify McQ right on-site, whoever their field representative is. We notify the producer, if it's Prairie or Ozinga.
It's Prairie.
Prairie, okay. So they notify right away. Their, their plant QC department's notified and they'll take action. So everybody is notified and that's my responsibility. The product would be the concrete producer, the designer, the structural engineer, and so forth. So everybody will have a stake at some point.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Soder?
Yes.
Tracy Saviano?
Yes.
Tracy Triber?
Yes.
Tracy Kuntzey?
Yes.
Tracy Maloney?
Yes.
And Tracy Britson?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item D. There was a question or a request to table this one. Is that still of interest?
Postpone.
Or postpone, not table?
I'm sorry? Yeah, because it's a long meeting. At least we'll have long discussions. Oh. So, I was asking, we couldn't do that? Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, then that'll take us to item E.
Is it, we don't have to make a motion?
We don't have to make a motion for it, so. So the next one is just a direction, so village board directing, direction rather, regarding the status of current video gaming moratorium and a review on the various policy options. This one was done from last year. I think it's gonna, is it September first?
I believe it's end of October.
November seventh, right?
November seventh, yeah, it's in the packet.
Right in the packet.
Okay, so, because it was, oh my, wow, it was a year. As I recall, the idea behind the moratorium was we had some oddball requests for gaming. In addition to additional parlors, which we weren't comfortable with, there were some strange requests putting gaming in liquor stores and so forth. So instead what we did was we put in a moratorium on this. My suggestion to, with discussions with Erica, was just to put into ordinance prohibiting gaming except for bars and restaurants. We can leave what the moratorium was doing in place, codify it with an ordinance, and then allow, you know, bars and restaurants, which we currently allow throughout the town to continue to do that, to continue.
We also have a gaming cafe.
We do, and those would be, no, 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 just further ones. Those are there, so there's really.
So essentially you wanna, you wanna ban gas stations and convenience stores.
Those are there too. And so, yeah, I mean, it would be, those are considered grandfathered, if you will. if you will.
No, I know, but going forth, what is your proposal as far as which type of establishment?
Just bars and restaurants.
So you wouldn't allow another gaming cafe?
Correct. And that was, that was the basis of the idea of the moratorium anyway, because as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, we really didn't have a direction at the time, except for, you know, a, a, a kind of a consensus, if you would, that we didn't want it to go into.
So I guess my, yeah, I guess my question then would be, can we legally do that? Can we legally say no truck stops? Because right now, truck stops under state law don't have a restriction. So can we then say no more?
I'll look at the state statute to see if there's protection. If not, then you could.
So the other, the other part of this is, I think, with the moratorium, there are a lot of policy options that we can put into place. I think along those lines, say no more gaming cafes or something like that, if it's, if that's even legal. But I think there are other policy options we can look at as well, as far as how many machines in the establishments, how many machines in a certain square area, you know, things like that, where we do have in place the square footage requirement. We did that before. I think that there's a lot of, you know, discussion on, do we want to cap licenses? Do we want to cap machines? Do we want to try to roll back, like, to a certain number? We're at 126 right now. We have a huge amount. And if you look back at the data, adding more machines does not mean we make more money or the machines make more money. The new machines don't make, on average, video gaming terminals, the, the amount each terminal makes in town on average, month-to-month, has gone down the more machines we add. So that's, you know, that's, we, I, I personally feel like if we can get to a sweet spot, you know, that would be great. I don't at all think that we should stop letting machines in town. I don't think that we should go to businesses that currently have them and say, you have to give us two. But I think that as a board, we can discuss, what do we have now? Where do we want to go? What makes the most sense? And how do we go about getting there? You know, the places that have them right now, they're not grandfathered in, so if ownership changes, we apply new rules. Like, any new rule that we decide today, the next meeting, at any point, new, you know, does ever, like, businesses that have however many machines right now, they keep them, but if ownership changes, they have to comply? Like, what do we, what do we as a board want? What do we want to see gaming look like in our community? We have saturation in the downtown area. Do we want to keep that saturation? You know, without really negatively impacting new businesses or taking away from existing businesses, you know, how do we kind of strike that balance?
Yeah, I, I just want to bring up another point that nobody's discussed yet, which was another big driver, at least for me, and that I believe our administrator pulled up and then Caleb did a, a great job on, on illustrating on page 319 of your, of the packet, which is the number of video gaming terminals per capita. We have one gaming terminal for every 25 people that live in this village. That's insane when you can, and it's 10 ti, the next closest one is, is, is one in, in 250 people per capita. So I feel like we're way oversaturated with this. And I would honestly prefer to calm down the amount of terminals that are in the downtown area. I'm fine with it at truck stops. I'm fine with it at gas stations. I'm fine with it in these other, if they, if they fulfill the other areas. But if another restaurant has to come in and say that they have to have in, in, in the system, they, they have to have gaming terminals in order to succeed, I, I think they need to rethink their, their business model. There are other, I think you mentioned, who does, who's the only person that doesn't have gaming terminals at the restaurant?
Tequila Vals.
Tequila Vals.
Who?
Tequila Vals.
Tequila Vals.
Mockingbird.
And Mockingbird. Mockingbird wasn't mentioned in that recap and they don't have them. And Mockingbird is doing great and they're expanding their business because guess what? It provides a nice environment for people who don't want to have to listen or hear or see all the lights and the sounds and everything else that are in, in those areas, even though they might be, you know, put off to the side, you still have, you still have to experience them and the noise, so.
And the distance social.
And distance social, yeah, doesn't have it either. So there are, there are very successful businesses in, in this village that don't have the gaming terminals, that have a, a business plan and a business model that allows them to grow, expand and do a great things within the village without having to have the video gaming terminals. And now I've said my case.
I think that's an interesting point because I hadn't thought of this until Caleb brought it up in his research, that a lot of communities do that six-month waiting period. So you open your doors, you're in operation for six months, you sort of prove your business model and then you apply for your gaming terminal if you want to have it.
Yeah, and, and honestly, I would even go, go for them, give them a year because, you know, people are going to, it takes a while to start up a business and get it going and get it functioning properly and getting, I mean, many business, many like restaurants or other businesses go out of, restaurants in particular will go out of business within the first year because they don't have a good business model, because they don't have the proper management in place to be able to manage that kind of business because it's so romantic and it draws so many people that don't really know what they're doing. Fortunately, we've had a lot of really great people that do know what they're doing that have come to this village. So that's, that's, that's my big concern. I don't, you know, Tequila Vals came into this, this village knowing that we didn't have, have, that there was a moratorium and, and we've been seeing so many other business plans from people, you know, saying that they want to have video gaming.
Again, no problem with that logic or point. It just, for me, I think it would have been helpful if we applied it sooner. If you recall, the Marathon, that's, I don't know how I think it is, right across from Dairy Queen, I recall when he came in, that proprietor, he said, in order for me to be able to stay in business, in order to be able to compete, I have to have gaming. And we gave it to him and I didn't understand it really because what does gaming have to do with selling gas? You know, it didn't make any sense. But, but it's a good point, you know, I mean, if you are going to rely on gaming to make your, your numbers, then you probably need to rethink your, your business model maybe or, or, you know, because what, what one has to do with the other, I don't know. But I, I think it's going to be met with some resistance, so we need to at least, you know, wrap ourselves to that.
Well, I've got some comments. I'd like to speak. Number one, the data you brought up, I do appreciate it, but it's not longitudinal data and costs and increases, like, things have gone up in the economy. And so it is a luxury thing. I don't think people are paying as much as they did a couple of years ago, so I think the data could potentially be skewed a little bit from that. So that's just something that I want to bring up. Number one. Number two, I do have an issue, like, saying, like, if I put all this money invested into a restaurant, that you're going to tell me what I want or can and cannot have? Like, is someone to tell me what type of, like, margaritas to sell? So if my goal when I build a restaurant is I also would like gaming, and if people don't like it, they can choose not to go to the establishment, establishment and it will work itself out. The per capita thing, we're 30%, what, residential, 70% commercial? So the numbers are going to be skewed anyway when it comes to businesses. We have way more restaurants and bars than a lot of places do. So some of these things are like, yes, I see it and it could look shocking, but when you really look at all the variables, it's not as shocking to me. And, and I also just, I am not like a, I'm not a big governmental oversight person. Like, go ahead, you want some games, have some games. You know, like, I, I, it's not a hill I'm going to die on.
Yeah.
I don't mind some regulations, but I don't like telling people what to do when they invested a crap ton of money to build the business the way they want to.
I think there's a little bit of a balance. I, I do think, I do think that what we need to come up with are the guardrails.
Six months waiting period, that's all we should do, in my opinion.
Six months with the square footage. We don't need six games when it takes up 90% of our space.
I'm okay, because we have square footage already in place. That's already in place. Like, I'm okay with the square footage where we have.
That's in place, but what I would like to say is if the business switch is over, they have to abide by new rules.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's the thing, like, we've got a bunch of businesses that have six games and it takes up 90% of their bar. And that's a little rough.
Yeah, absolutely. It turns over, now you follow the new regulations.
Well, can we also talk about or incentivize or discuss in some way, businesses looking at their numbers and saying, hey, I don't, I don't actually need this one machine? Like, you know, incentivize reduction to get us closer to that sweet spot? I do, like, the numbers could be skewed. I did look 20, 2022, 2023, 2024. And I looked, I mean, I looked like May, 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 June, June, June. So it's not like, well, yeah, February's garbage and May's fantastic, you know? It's, I tried to look at the same.
Point in time.
And the numbers just aren't, we're not making more. We might make $500 more across 120 machines, but we're not making thousands.
But I still don't know all the variables that play into that. That's why I'm like, I can't base the decision.
We don't, but you have to, if we're going to look at numbers, if we're going to, if we're going to accept any data, you have to accept, yeah, there will be variables. So I like the idea of some guardrails. I like the idea of having new, like, any new machines have to meet the standards that we put in, square footage stuff, all that good stuff. Could we look at ways of saying, can you tuck it in a corner? Can you, like, for new, for new, for existing businesses when they switch over, can we not have it in the front window? I love what Cobb's has. I love that little nook. The gaming nook.
The only thing I'll say about that is that if we're going to impose a year waiting period, so like that, you're asking businesses to create a room for a machine that they don't have for a year and they never get.
That's true. I was actually thinking more of the, some of the existing ones that are just like in the middle of the room, you know, that's the.
You know, I think that that is, Tricia's saying, if you go into business and it has a machine and you don't like to see it, then you just got to like.
And the other thing is, a lot of those places probably wouldn't make square footage, I'm like trying to think through everything, they probably wouldn't meet the square footage requirements anyway. So if they switched ownership, they'd have to sw, they'd have to reduce the number of machines.
Well, and I think it's a good point, too.
And it doesn't transfer, it doesn't transfer whether you own the ship to the business.
I do want to make sure that if they have one person sticking around for like a five person ownership thing, that there's a reapplication and they have, like, I don't want, like, it's like a liquor license, if you're the majority shareholder and you're not the old majority shareholder, you have to reapply, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, one thing to consider is that it's a brand thing for our town as well. We're trying to become the culinary district and it has actually become that. And there are very competitive restaurants and bars that are opening up and we want the best ones to compete here. And there's a certain point when we become more of a gambling town and the quality of the food and the experience isn't as valuable, like when a bank of gaming terminals can make you an easy 30, 40 grand a month when you're not even trying with your food or your drinks, then you're kind of incentivizing something different for the business to focus on. And that might be why most of these towns have much more restrictions. It's not because they don't like businesses, it's because they're trying to bring about the right kind of businesses to compete with other towns. So I'm not trying to get rid of them all, but there is, like, asking around, there are a lot of people who, on Facebook, I put a post up, asking, do you want it or not want it? Not trying to lead people, but it does seem like there are a lot of people saying, we want a lot less of them, we can't get seats anymore, there's so many spots dedicated to gambling. And I don't blame, like, if we have a restaurant that should go out of business because they're not trying anymore with their food, I'm not saying that I'm pointing at any one of them, but if you have video gaming terminals, you can just stay open forever because you don't really need to try. So you want a balance of give some incentive with the video gaming terminals, but not let it become the focus of the business, like the gaming cafes. So limiting them on a restaurant does make some sense and I don't see it as just punitive attacking business.
Yeah, I guess we don't want gaming cafes that serve food, you know?
Like, I'm okay with no gaming cafes in the downtown.
Right, but the, like.
And I get that.
And I like that. I like, I like no gaming cafes in downtown. But I think to Andy's point, we don't want, we don't want our restaurants to turn into gaming cafes that are solely served, and I think the six-month rule will help that some. I'm, I don't know if it's going to do everything, but at least you have to prove that your business is viable in the first place without gaming to support.
Were the square footage requirements developed in house or did we get that from state guidelines or county or anything?
They're ours, I think.
Did we put, did we bring them together?
The square footage requirements, I think that we, we did so.
One thing I think we can do is visit, make sure that there's compliance.
Well, the thing is, there are enough businesses grandfathered in.
Well.
That already had gaming before we put the square footage requirement in place. And like I said, I'm not, you know, I don't plan to go up to existing businesses and be like, you've had your games for 10 years, we just did this, give them back.
Yeah.
But if there was a way to incentivize them, like, hey, we'll do something for you if you give us.
I liked some of those ideas in the packet of incentivizing and, like, to release a video game terminal, but also incentivizing the restaurants that decide we're not going to have it.
Yeah.
Because we are, we could increase the fees and match some of the, the other towns, like, even if we charged $5,000 a year on a machine that makes them 30 grand a month, it's still very, very worth it for them to pay that fee. And maybe that goes into a bank that creates, kind of like the facade program that Erica mentioned, maybe having a program commit to video gaming free and there's incentives that maybe are paid for with video gaming terminal fees. So it's not like it goes to us, it's just trying to spread out and equalize between the businesses and create maybe a higher percentage of restaurants that create that experience for people that they're asking for is, we don't want tons of video game terminals in the restaurant.
So I have a question for the attorney. Would an establishment that has, say, eight games that only has room for six, claim that it's a legal nonconformance?
If they were, you're talking about, if you already passed that requirement set based on square footage?
Correct.
Or would we retire yearly?
I mean, maybe try.
We've been slapped with that one a couple of times.
It's a licensing issue, it's not, it's only an issue.
Okay.
So if the village decides it wants to change, it's fine.
But licensing is not based on so, aren't they?
Yeah. If we grandfathered in any existing.
Yeah, when we, when we implemented the square footage requirements, existing businesses were grandfathered in. So we're not applying those square footage requirements to businesses that had games before the date of the implementation.
Then, yeah, they try, argue that it's a right that these, if the village wants to take away their privileges or license on.
Would they prepare?
Do we want to fight that fight?
Nobody here is talking about taking away.
No, I'm just saying, as I know there are, there are some, I mean, we're talking about.
There's no desire to do that.
So much noise and disruption and seats that are being taken up by the games. If we were to revisit compliance and found establishments to be out of compliance, could that be posed as an argument?
If they're out of compliance, then yeah, then they can be cited and then they can be brought before.
That would be our position, but would theirs be that it's legally nonconforming?
Maybe, but if they're not legally nonconforming and they were violating the square footage after that, but.
Right, but we, again.
I want to speak about this moving forward, not anything punitive on something that exists. Like, I'm not, I don't want to create enemies with our businesses, like, no desire for that.
If the village has a restaurant saying video gaming is out of law, period, and no more, and banned from the village, I don't think that's, this is not the direction we're going in, so.
No.
Just talking what ifs. Just talking what ifs, so, thank you.
I was pretty surprised by how low our fee is in comparison to other places and now have a much better idea why we are the gaming people.
I picked up on the concept that was talked about, about increasing that fee and then using that fee as some sort of incentive. I think we can think about incorporating that into the budget this fall.
Does it, does it make sense? You know, I like what Andy did with kind of just putting a questionnaire out there. Is that, does it make sense for us to do a survey ourselves from a website that, you know, if you have to say you're an Eastundy restaurant resident or not and then, you know, what's your feeling about the gaming terminals? Do we have too many? Do we have too few in the different areas? Is that opening it up to? I mean, we're here to serve the residents as well and, you know, there's places I'm, I'm not interested in going to because they're just gonna, I know they're gonna be just too loud. Even though I used to enjoy going and eating at those same places before they were in there. So.
We do have a volume requirement.
We have a volume thing.
If the, you're not.
It's lights, too.
Yeah, the lights are a thing.
I'll tell you, it's, for example, and here's the thing about the space and everything else. And I agree with you, Tricia, I don't wanna start rolling back on people that have already been approved that have had them forever. But here's like a good example with the space requirements, you know, for somebody going forward. You know, so if, and because, you know, it's right there when you walk in, right in the front. It's right up against, you know, half, you know, a third of the bar. And the rest of that area is very small for tables, for eating, for, you know, for just hanging out. But they also have the upstairs. So, you know, when we're calculating, you know, the square footage, it needs to be by floor. They can't take the square footage of both the top floor and the bottom floor, put it together and then say, this is how many I am allowed because of my whole space. There's just practical, some practical matters like that. And that's probably, like, just the first example that comes off my, off the top of my head with how much it's really, really encroaching on the space of what that business used to have.
Or was meant to be.
Yeah.
All right, so just to recap, so we can formulate this into something that we can bring back to you. No gaming cafes in the downtown. Gaming licenses do not transfer. Any ownership change must reapply. Evaluate the designated area and see if we can put any additional guardrails around making it so that it's not sort of front and center. Looking at increasing the fees, potentially using increasing fees for incentives, six-month waiting period, and then square footage by floor.
Which, yeah. That sounds.
Fair to come back with, yeah.
Sounds fair.
Somewhere in the middle.
Okay. Anything else? Wonderful. That'll take us to our next item, which is again a discussion. So this is the Village Board Discussion in Direction of an Ordinance Amending the Village Code Section thirty-seven oh one and Chapters one thirteen and one twenty concerning food trucks. So Erica, would you like to open this one up?
Sure. So we've had a continued discussion about this and the Community Events and DPO Committee discussed it again recently. We've gone back and forth on which way we wanna go. I think the memo accurately reflects the committee's recommendation. And now we would like to understand if the full board is on board with that recommendation.
And so one of the things I've been working on with Franco, Franco and Mark had also brought forward when we talked about this last was that we have food trucks in Eastundy that aren't regulated that are out along one of the auto dealerships and at Gat Guns and also in the park trucking, truck parking behind Palumbo and that kind of thing.
And the Elgin Mall area, too.
Well, yeah, no manchas until they get their water heaters up and go in and the Health Department, King County Health Department approves everything. So they're in, they're in the village already and they're completely unregulated, un, and so I'm just concerned about the, I wanna make sure that we address the areas that have been found by the food trucks and that are already being used by the food trucks and that, and that we make sure that they are, have proper protocols for, you know, holding temperature, all of the sanitation and that they're serving safe food. And that's my main concern with, with trying to bring this forward. This does not include anything about downtown at all. There were the four, there were the four different points where it's permitted. And I just wanna make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Food trucks are only permitted on public roads or during events with village approval. Food trucks are permitted on private property with permission of the property owner and are permitted to sell to the property owner's private guests. And I'm imagining at this point that the ones at Gat Guns and the ones at the auto, at the auto dealer and the ones behind Palumbo are not sending out invitations and they are not their guests. These are just people from, you know, driving down twenty-five going, oh, I want some mojitos. So how do we get that in here? I would rather have them in a, in a parking lot with the permission of the owner. You know, and if it's, if it's something that can handle, why was it, why was it that specific verbiage? Was that just all over from previous?
I think that is so that the property owner who's hosting the food truck, say, in the case of Gat Guns, the primary business of Gat Guns is to sell merchandise. The primary business isn't to, you know, host a food truck and bring people in for that food truck. So by saying that the food truck is only going to serve the guests of that property, we'd like to limit it to being an accessory use and not like saying, we're gonna have a food truck fest on Gat Guns property and we're gonna invite twelve food trucks and there's gonna be, you know, this every weekend thing. So I think that was the intent, but you can add clarity if you have any more. Any additional comments on why we would put food trucks serving to private guests?
Does this turn into a food truck business on a property that has no business on it?
Okay. And does this also give, for instance, if there's a food truck in their parking lot and there are people that are coming, you know, driving down twenty-five up to Carver'sville or down to Elgin that say, oh, hey, I wanna pick this up. I'm hungry. But then instead they decide to stay all afternoon and party and do whatever they wanna do on that public property than they have, or that private property than they have the right to say.
Yeah, and the idea behind this, too, is more like, you know, if you're a corporate business, let's say, and you're doing like a corporate event for your employees and saying, you know, what special treats they are, and a food truck come and lunches on us. That's in those situation, not, not the situation you're describing. And I think then the private property owner will have to regulate that and say, you know, can't stay here all day. This is, you know, this is the priority of some business.
Well, are we gonna, would we rely on the property owner then to regulate it? Because I, my thought is, is that, yeah, while it may be private property and the food truck is on there, as Kathleen mentioned, they're catering to the general public, which certainly then falls under our jurisdiction. Because we don't, we don't know what they're doing, how they're doing it or when. And I think we need to.
No, it, it's maybe a challenge and it would be, you have to, you know, you see a problem in the business's primary purpose and that food trucks. You have to send Chris or Inspector over to say, let's go ahead and hear it.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. Why, why do we need this verbiage about the guests of the property owner? Wouldn't that be up to the property owner to regulate that, really? If they see a line of people out there that aren't coming to Gat Guns, they can just go out there and say, we don't want all these people here. Why, why do we need to have anything to do with that? So I don't understand. What if they don't need? What? I guess what if, you know, think about the what ifs. If the owner of Gat Guns were to go out to the food truck operator and say, we need you to move on.
Well, in the first place, Gat Guns is probably the ones that invited them. So obviously they enjoy having that there. So I don't understand.
Trespassing otherwise and they can enforce that.
I, I just don't understand what this even means, to be honest with you. Only guests of the property owner, not the general public. I mean, I don't know what that means. How, if somebody is driving by Route twenty-five and they see a food truck and they go in to Gat Guns and get a taco, I don't understand why we would have a problem with that, I guess.
Yeah.
So maybe it's.
Every establishment in the town decides to take that route.
Take what route?
To allow a food truck in there. I mean, there has to be some control over it, otherwise we could.
Well, that's what we're trying to actually do is put some control over it.
Well, we can't do it now because we don't have anything. We can't do anything now.
I don't wanna make something that doesn't make sense.
But we're gonna have a permit and we're gonna enforce the King County Health Department. So if they want to have a food truck, I don't see why that matters. Like, on public land, I get it. We said, no, we don't want that.
This is private.
This is private land. If they want to have a food truck, like, are they gonna check and make sure that you looked at guns before you get the taco? Or you could have the taco if you're thinking about a gun.
And that car dealership is, has it there on Sundays when they're closed. Because they have no business there. So it's just a vacant parking lot for them. So it's.
Are we gonna regulate what people can do on their own private property? What a business can do on their private property?
One suggestion I would add is perhaps we should because, again, I mean, what are, what are we trying to achieve here? Do we want to have a food truck at every, at any business more than once a week? Maybe you do and that's fine, but if you want to say, okay, Gat Guns, you have this food truck, but I prefer if you only did it once or twice a week versus every day of the week or twice a month or four times a month, so that maybe people would patronize other businesses in town. I think that's a good incentive or a good control to have so that you can have a balance. And maybe people would, instead of going to food truck every week, go out and check out Eastundy restaurants. So there is an argument to be made to, to having some kind of regulation in place that may limit.
Guardrails.
Often. Guardrails. Guardrails.
Just to play a little advocate to Erica's point, if you had, I guess raising Gat Guns as an example, if Gat Guns had a food truck seven days a week, you know, or every day of their operation, all hours, would say that that food truck hasn't cut a deal with Gat Guns to say, we're gonna give you a kickback for like a few here. Now it's not a guns business, it's a food truck.
I just essentially.
I understand that.
Yeah, I see that point.
Well, here's one thought.
Chief, can I ask you a question? How many, how many calls have we gotten to for the food truck at Gat Guns, the problems? No.
No, there was one. There was one in your police report.
At Gat Guns for the food truck?
I don't remember that.
Well, so I guess I just don't understand what we're trying to prevent. I mean, what, I, I get saying, we don't want it in the downtown. Fine. We've had this fight so many times. But if they're doing something on Route twenty-five, that's not taking business from the downtown, I don't think.
But it's also a, a vision of what do we want in the village. So for example, Palumbo's Truck Park, there's three thousand trucks out there every day. If they have food trucks out there seven days a week, they're never gonna fill in those restaurants in that retail building that they build because they've got another option. So some kind of right-size balance where it's a nice amenity, but it's not an omnipresent thing could be helpful.
Weekends?
But again, I, I don't know that we have a huge problem right now, but maybe we will someday.
Maybe, but we do have this set up that if we did have a problem, we could address it or call in our license.
We could do this and then amend it if need be, based on what's happening. But this is a good starting point.
Kelly, what happens if somebody who frequents a food truck gets sick and decides to sue the village? Can they? I mean, is there any liability?
I would say anybody can sue the village attorney reasonably.
Which we have seen frivolous lawsuit.
That's another story. So I think, I think you're better off regulating than not. Because you don't wanna turn a blind eye to food being sold to the village, right? Because we don't know how it's prepared, someone's washing their hands or it's at home, you know, right temperatures and it's better to try to regulate it than not, right? People getting sick.
Okay, so in the event somebody does, I mean, whether they purvey or not is not the question. But they could name the village in a suit.
The village has sort of immunity on most of these types of issues. However, they're here, so I'm hearing they're here.
They're here.
And then having regulations.
Right, Mark?
Yeah.
We need to do that.
Yeah, we're talking about adding regulations for the health safety with complying with the Health Department, having a permit. Like, so all these things are covered in the same way a restaurant would.
The village should know which businesses are operating in the village. That's a safety issue.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's part of it, too.
Do we have no permit process right now or we do and nobody has filled one out?
We don't have one.
We don't have it.
We don't have one.
So, yeah, they're, it's not like they're violating our rules. We just don't have it yet, so. Once we have them.
But we have the rules. These are the rules.
Yeah, but I'm okay with striking out the private guests thing. I think that's hard to enforce and it doesn't bother me that somebody has a food truck on their own private property. But I like all these other rules.
Franco did mention that it, we do have it set for Friday to Monday. Do we wanna just say Saturdays and Sundays instead and limit the days a little bit further? So it's four days.
They might be filling gaps when other things aren't available, though, like Mondays are.
Well, then why don't we say two days a week instead of specific, instead of noting specific days?
Or making them circulate different food trucks?
Yeah, that gives it the.
That's too much regulating.
Yeah, that's too much.
Well, if we're avoiding having a permanent business set up as a food truck and we don't want them to be there all days of every day.
Yeah.
We have to think about the enforcement requirements, too. I mean, manpower is an issue for putting all these regulations in place.
A food truck village is actually really cool. In Portland, when I visit my sister, there's tons of them. There's big banks of food trucks where you can try twenty things at all of them. So I don't wanna destroy competition and say, these businesses aren't allowed in our town. We only like these kind of businesses. Like, it does work in other villages or cities where they can allow this variety and it doesn't ruin the whole town.
We could just implement this one, come back in six months and see how we think it's going and then have another conversation.
I think that's a good start.
I would say.
Scratch the private guests thing.
I'm reading this entire performance, I'm sorry. Do we have right now a limit on how many times a specific vendor can?
We did at one.
Was it ten?
We did at one point, but that was for the downtown area.
That's right.
So just generally, we don't have to.
I don't think so.
Well, no, they have private permits. It's, how long is permanent? A year? A year. So, I mean, during that year, though, they, there's no limit on how many times they can show up right now. As long as they're within these hours, which, I mean, I feel like these hours are set to thinking that they're gonna be downtown. I don't know if they really need, generally.
Yeah, on Saturdays and Sundays, seeing them out there in the afternoon, early afternoon.
Yeah.
Well, is the, is the time restriction specific to public spaces or private spaces?
It applies to all of them, any public or private states.
I think there's something to, you know, limiting the number of days through, through the week.
Yeah. It's the, it's the hours in the day because I'm thinking like, if I'm having a party and I wanna have a food truck in my driveway for my, to cater my party at seven o'clock at night, I can't.
I also have that question. Is this applied to commercial properties only or is this applied to residential as well? If you were having a private party in your backyard, could you have a food truck?
Didn't we discuss commercial only?
I think that would fall under private, a private property, residential, wouldn't it? Yeah. Be included with that.
So if you wanna have a carve-out for residential?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, there's language in there that if it's a resident, that applies for it. The village administrator or the board has the authority to be flexible.
That's already in there?
Yep.
All right, then we're closed.
That's right, we did throw in caveat. I remember. Right, we did throw in caveat. I remember that. You could say yes.
Might be good for a block party or something.
How many times have you run this?
Yes.
Enough to wake up at three a.m.
I guess I would say we should change the hours from ten a.m. to whichever is earlier, sunset or A P M. And, and, um, I would, personally, I would, I would make it for now, seven days a week. I don't, I have a problem with that personally. No, I'm not saying we have to do that, but personally.
I always liked the weekend thing a little bit more.
I do too.
But I'll go majority.
Or for events with permission, if we limit the days of the week.
I mean, they can always come back and add. I mean, if somebody wants to have it, and then they have to justify.
I guess it's going back to whether, since we're thinking mostly about on private property, making sure that the business, that the business's main business is what they're supposed to be doing.
Or should we regulate and say that they have to be open? If it's a business, you're saying this?
Actually, yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Okay, so.
I agree.
If you're gonna be in a commercial space, it needs to be during open hours. However, how would that apply to, um, the truck parking area, the tear business park? Cause it's really.
Why is there always some exception?
Well, I'm just, I don't know, how would you apply that?
Oh, no, that's fair. Like, no, it's totally fair.
They're open twenty-four seven.
They're open all the time. People are coming and going, no matter what.
So they would be open, since they're open twenty-four seven, they would allow, be allowed to have them?
Twenty-four hour.
From Friday to Monday, from?
Friday through Monday.
Ten a.m. to sunset or eight P M. Yeah, I, that's fair. If you're a twenty-four hour business, that makes perfect sense. Yeah.
And then, do we have exclusion, exclusionary areas? Are we gonna say nothing in the downtown for the time being? Although we have a food truck downtown every Thursday, Thursday and Monday.
There's already a carve out for village sponsored events.
So then do we just say a blanket, not, not for, for now, nothing in the downtown?
I think it's in there.
I think it's in there.
It should be in there.
Cause I know we took out the allowed zones, but I don't know what that means. Also, the man know about.
Right, so.
We took out all the zones.
Right.
I guess.
Yeah, it has to be on private property. So it can't be on streets. It can't, it can't be on any public property.
There could be on the gravel lot.
So who's got private property that can put a truck on in the downtown? Anybody?
It's pretty limited.
Blair.
What's the downtown area you consider? Yeah, how is that, how is that? I've got a metropolitan lane in between, uh, my place and Roger's.
Don't complicate this.
I'd say fifteen.
This is what we wanna do, is let this truck, is.
I mean, they don't sell alcohol, so it is good for bringing people to the town to go to get drinks after.
Again, so we can revisit this in six months and see what's working, what's not. And then if we find that, if you wanna do something different, we can, we can do something else.
It's discussion and direction. Do you have what you need?
I think.
Okay.
We got it. Yes. So we'll bring it back, probably at the next meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to. Reports, I'll start out by mentioning and thanking everyone on staff for the wind down and, uh, our, just last week was really well attended. Um, I was gonna suggest anybody who wanted to check out Motor Mondays before you go home, do that, but I'm sure they're closed by now. Uh, also too, just a reminder, um, Catherine's probably already told us all about it, but the I M L conference is coming up next month. So if you haven't communicated, or if you have a, a desire to take on any of those sessions, conferences, stuff, that, um, let her know which ones you want. And, uh, that's, that's about all I've got. So let's start with Andy.
Uh, just a follow up on a couple of things to keep on the radar about the parking at Hager in those spots, uh, where we have open spots where we could have parking. Just hoping that's being pushed along, that people could open, openly park there. Um, and then maybe putting signs out to direct bikers using the trail to go over there, so they're not using up valuable downtown spots.
Talking about the North Lots on Maiden, right?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's a really good idea.
If they'll use them, yeah.
Cause, yeah, they're on a bike, they're just getting on the trail. They don't really care if they're, they might wanna be near restaurants for after the ride, but it is a lot easier for bikers who are just using the trail and that's it. Um, but yeah, we don't really direct them anywhere, so maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, but it wouldn't be hard to say cyclist parking.
We would, we did have directions for them to park down.
On the lot.
On the lot, but I do, is that gone now? No?
No, I don't think.
Oh, true. So yeah, maybe we push them further.
Nobody.
I wouldn't mind if I'm a biker, I don't mind.
No, but that blows up.
Yeah, we need, we need it now for walkers.
How much participation do we get on that though? But, but when are they parking? Aren't they like parking like Saturday and Sunday mornings, or are they parking, they're not parking like?
I think on weekends, probably, uh, early morning until the afternoon.
Yeah.
But the busy time when people are trying to go to the farmer's market and.
The Sunday market and.
Yeah, it's, and when I ride on the weekend, I try to go way around that area anyway. So I think the cyclists would like parking not in a bunch of foot traffic. So I think it's a good spot to put them.
Do you park downtown very often?
Yeah, I saw today.
Yeah.
But not during like the dinner hour, or whatever you wanna call it. Early afternoon, morning, afternoon, morning. We don't have an immense amount of people trying to park down there, usually.
Well, they have to be out of there by sunset.
Yeah, well.
Off the trail by sunset.
Good theory.
I've got lights on my bike.
I mean, then you're still parked with a bike hanging out the back, going down River Street.
I don't mind if we say, go park down by Hager, but I just don't want to tell people they can't park.
I mean, open to anybody parking there, but signage to push them there as well, especially. Um, and then another, just follow up on the notification system. I know that that's being looked into, but I get pinged by people every once in a while, hoping that's coming along. And that's all.
Okay, Chelsea Saviano.
So, um, Eastern Arts Council, we're discussing with our budget that, um, we would love to commission a mural and the front portion, what street is on? The, the Dodger Line property, the yellow, the obnoxious yellow, just until it is, um, cause it, there's tenants for a while, so if we can put a mural on it for a couple of years, that the tenant will be there.
No, the, um.
Neutral Village?
It's a railroad.
The one on Railroad Street, the yellow, that front.
The side, the end of the bar.
Yeah, the end of it. Um, we have budget for it and then we can at least beautify it for a few years while it's sitting there.
Facing tequila valves.
Facing tequila valves, that, that, that side. Um, so that's something that we are talking about and would like to propose moving forward on, just so you know where our head is at.
Where is this building? I'm sorry, where is this building?
The yellow building.
Across from tequila valves.
Put something cool on that.
Park building.
So that's only gonna be up for like two years.
Yeah, exactly. So do something for, while it's sitting there, yellow. Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be there yellow. Even Roger Aaron stated it.
Um, anyway, that's, that's on the radar.
Rich?
No report.
Scott?
Uh, no report.
Uh, Catherine?
Um, yeah, a few things here. Um, I actually wanted to thank Public Works for all the great work that you did on the frontage road across from the B P. Um, the residents sound like they're thrilled with everything. Um, and, um, hopefully that'll kinda quiet the area. Um, I do believe there was another incident at that same house, um, that was in the most recent, um, report, um, so that we still kinda have an issue with some of the tenants, um, at that residence.
Not like very corner, huh, huh, so?
I don't, I don't know which one it is, but it, it was in a report, um, and it was mentioned that was the one that was across the key and suspicious or they were involved in somehow or another in that shooting.
Yeah, one of those houses.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then also, I just wanna say, sing praises for the, um, whoever the contractor was that did the road resurfacing up in the Estates area, um, Council Hill and all that. They did a spectacular job on multiple fronts. Um, the speed after grinding and then doing the, the finishing was great. Particularly nice for the people that do walk in that neighborhood, cause it is a walking neighborhood, that the shoulders and the packed limestone was, is, was watered down. It was, it's really well packed, um, and it makes it a lot safer, especially when we've got cars coming down, um, the street that, the narrow streets. Um, so, um, for people that do walk in the area, residents and, and other people that do walk in the area. Um, they also did the aprons into the driveway, unlike the people that did Boni Dundee. Sorry, I'm gonna complain about that because they only did the roadway. They didn't go into the aprons of the driveway, um, which is where it had stopped prior. The road had stopped prior, um, so they, so it's a nice clean, um, transition. They also went in towards the mailboxes because we've got, we've got, um, so that the mail trucks aren't like just going off into the shoulder, um, and going off the shoulder, creating mud and messes and all sorts of things that we're dealing with. So they did a great job, um, and I just will really wanna highlight, um, how happy, I've had like three or four other neighbors as we're walking around, um, compliment it. The other, the only other thing, um, that they had to say, um, was that there was somebody that's new, that just moved in like a year ago. And if we can be note, they didn't know the street was gonna get resurfaced. So if there is either tags or something that we can put into the, their, their utility bills, saying, hey, your, your street is gonna be up for, um, for resurfacing, um, congratulations. That, um, that that's a, a nice thing, so that they can plan accordingly, um, if they've got, um, any concerns with that. So that was that. Um, then, um, I have now heard from five people in, about the Ravine Road. Um, Scott Kramer came in the last meeting and had a lot of really good information about that. Um, since then, um, I've also heard from, and I've gotten permission to say, basically Patricia Miller at six fifty Ravine, Yvette Andre at six fifty-five Oak Ridge, Sylvia Bowder at six forty-two Ravine, and Julie Finnegan at six twenty-one Ravine, and Scott Kramer at one-on-one Crabtree. They're all right in that area. Their biggest concern, um, real, is, is the speed as well as the school buses and the breaking noises when they're at, um, I think it's Hawthorne, before they turn onto Ravine. Um, that that is, um, uh, uh, still an issue that, um, they have a lot of concerns about. I wanna thank Chief for your, your feedback on that, um, and I'll try and, um, if I give you these, these addresses, it's, 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 it sounds like we've, the next step is to do a traffic, study feasibility for the speed bumps. Is that what my underst, is my understanding correct?
I think it's a multi-layered approach of, I've asked both Chief and Phil to sort of look at what we've done and what we're still evaluating and what we possibly could do. And part of that puzzle is that there's now, we've been told, a hundred and fifty less kids going to that school this year. So the drop offs and the pickups should be easier. Um, so we wanna do a little bit of monitoring before we make any decisions. So I think a comprehensive overview of the, what we've done, what we're evaluating, and what we could potentially do down the road. Compile that into some messaging to the residents might be really helpful.
Yeah, that'd be good.
The school district to talk about using that or not using that as a bus cutter?
I think Chief had that conversation with them.
There's no stops or drop offs or anything like that for the kids in the, uh, Lakewood Estates area, but if they're using it just from, you know, ease of, you know, uh, ingress egress kinda thing, maybe we can get them to just talk to the bus drivers and say, go around. And talk about that.
I did talk specifically about that. I talked about the circle brand and how they were using that, um, their parking lots kinda stuff. For circle brand, I was saying, hey, we could maybe alleviate some of the backup issues by utilizing circle brand as well. They were already using it as a circle brand. But as George Meyer said, a hundred and fifty less kids will hopefully read less.
That, and, and Scott had mentioned that last year, so maybe it's that, you know, the, basically the principal told him something similar last year, but then as the year went on, but now they're, the whole redistricting happened.
That's what he, he.
This year. So maybe, maybe it will be less of an issue, but yeah, monitoring is probably, you know, definitely the right thing to do. And then the other thing is, um, really the buses and the trucks using both Boni Dundee and Ravine to get back to the lot, um, when they are not picking up or dropping off students. And putting them on to some of the other main roads like Barrington, cause that's, that's practically just as easy and beats right to the lot.
Doorway down twenty-five.
That are, are more properly sized, that have sidewalks on them, that have curbs, that have, you know, lines down the middle of them, um, and have better sightlines.
And then with the driver's speed bumps too, Phil, you and I spoke about this and Chief, uh, there's been a, a call for them up in the terrace, along Aberdeen and Brayburn specifically, and if you do that, look for the ones that could be removed, cause they get really beat up by the plows, so. Put a guy in that can be taken out, you know, metal anchors, that would be preferable. Is that it?
Uh, the last thing I had is, um, uh, El Jamal is open. Um, they seem to be very happy. Um, I was there on Sunday, um, for my second time. Spoke with Rosa. The grand opening is planned for August thirtieth. She doesn't have an exact time yet, um, and they're hoping that, um, they have the holdup with No Man's Chas, and there was another restaurant where they're doing like full food prep, um, on things is the water, um, the, the, the water, um, heaters, the.
Water heaters.
The water heaters are, are, are undersized for what they're putting in, so they have to replace them, um, and they're working on getting that replaced as well as the fire suppression under the hoods. I guess it's this Wednesday, I think she was saying. So, um, as soon as that can get straightened out, then they'll, they'll, they'll get No Man's Chas' truck off the parking lot and they'll be opened up in there. Um, and then the other one in the back will be open, so, as well. So, um, lots of traffic there, lots of, lots of business going in and out of there. Looks great.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Sarah?
Um, the only question I have is actually about Max Freeman Park, which I will not direct to staff today. Um, so no report.
Okay, please.
No report.
No report? Francis? So? Chief?
No.
That's it?
Here it goes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. We normally have a meeting, um, two weeks from now, which would be Labor Day. We're not doing that, so we're having our next regularly scheduled meeting on September ninth, which will be mostly a committee of the whole, possibly one or two small action items, but lots more good discussion to come.
Yay.
I will not give that to you. Is there any desire to move that meeting? Another day, because I don't remember if I ran up past you or.
Because I don't remember if I ran up past you or not, but, so right now we have, September 16th is designated as our strategic planning long meeting from 5:00 to 9:00. We have three other Mondays in September, because there's five totals, we have the 9th, the 23rd, and the 30th. So if people have a preference, I am completely open.
I don't have any, but just the IML only, that is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I think, so.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Oh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, yeah, right.
The 23rd.
Thursday is the lawyer.
Preference for the 23rd? How does everybody else feel? That works, that works. All right, then we will do September 16th and September 23rd.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm intending to park till 5:00 on the 9th. There's no way.
That is all.
All right, cool. We do not have a second session?
No.
Okay, great, well then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Submissed.
All right, and.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, we'll see you in another couple of weeks.
So is there brush paper scissors, I don't know which one it was?
I like to switch it off.